So that's on there, someone will be on the desktop.
Good evening and welcome to the February 9th, 2015 Town Council meeting. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Could we get the roll call by the town clerk?
Chairman Ray?
Here.
Counselor Grenon?
Here.
Counselor Jordan?
Here.
Counselor McCoslin?
Here.
Counselor Sullivan?
Here.
Counselor Wagner?
Present.
And Counselor Walsh?
Here.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to Town Council reports and correspondence. Are there any Town Council reports? Yes, Caitlin?
Just one from the Shooting and Firing Range Committee. We are right now in talks with hiring somebody to do the independent safety evaluation as per ordered by the Town Council, and we are just awaiting the application from the Spurwink Guard and Gun Club, and we will be scheduling our next meeting, so keep an eye out for that on the website.
Thank you. Any other? Yes, Molly?
I just have a quick update. I asked Jay Sharma over at the library to tell me something about what was going on with usage this month, and he gave me a really interesting statistic. He said even being closed for nine days, 35 percent of the month, we had 1,258 local patrons who visited the library in the month of January. I was really impressed with that number because every time I went to the library, people drove in and looked at me and said, "Oh, is it open?" Because they'd drive in and say they couldn't really figure out which door to go in. But yes, the library is open. It seems to be functioning very well, and I'm pleasantly surprised at how well the operations are going on in there, and that we actually do have users still coming in into that very small building in the back, the Spurwink School building. And anybody who drove by last week saw there was a really big change that happened, and maybe Mike will give us an update on that in a few minutes. But very exciting, and it's coming along.
Thank you very much, Molly. Anybody else? No? Yes?
My wife is an avid library goer, and she is thrilled with what you've been able to do and incredibly impressed with how the staff has reached out for citizens to make sure that they get the services that they require in that space. So she came home this week raving about whatever's happening. It's, she's feeling very good about it, and I'm sure she does. I'm sure there are other citizens that are feeling just as, just as good about it.
That's great.
Thank you.
Hey, Jim? Anybody? Yes, Jessica?
I'd just like to send a note of deep appreciation to our Public Works Department. They must be exhausted. All this snow is just unbelievable, so, anyway, that's what I've got to say.
Thank you, Jessica. Anybody else? Okay, great, thank you. Moving on to the Finance Committee report. Jim?
Well, what you have in front of you is hot off the press. I didn't get a real chance to read this because of all the snow and the budget requirements that are taking place in the Finance Office here in the town. But, you know, a couple of things. Hopefully, Jamie, that with your feedback last time, we've got it right this time in terms of having placeholders in the correct spot. But this is work in progress. Michael and I and Scott are working to try to perfect what you have in front of you. But it gives you a snapshot rather than the 27 pages that are attached to your agenda today. Point out the debt service. That is an annual number of $888,319 versus what we spent last year. We're going to try to perfect that a little better so there is some relationship to the amount of debt we actually have versus the debt service. But we took some of the feedback from our last meeting, and again, if you have feedback this time, more than happy to do that and try to perfect a snapshot of our financial condition for our meetings on a monthly basis. So, again, the comments at the bottom are pretty boilerplate from last month. There have been no modifications to that. But again, I just got this presented to me a few minutes ago, so we've been working on it for the last few days, so, anyway.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Any questions for Jim? Yes, Jessica?
I've got a request. This looks great, by the way. But as we're coming up to, on budget season, could next month brief the council on overlay fund? What that is, how it works, and all that stuff, because...
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you?
Overlay.
Overlay. He could give us a briefing on the overlay fund?
Sure.
At the next...
No problem, thank you.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you very much, Jim. Next is Citizen Opportune for Discussion of Items Not on the Agenda. Is there anybody here? No? Okay. Then we'll move on to the Town Manager's Monthly Report. Michael?
Yes, Jessica. I just want to join in acknowledging the great work of the Department of Public Works and Police Department, the Fire Department, you know, the building inspection. Everyone seems to be involved in some way in dealing with the weather, really, really all the departments, one way or another, facilities. And, you know, even, you know, we contract out for, like, the sidewalks of Town Hall and on the school grounds through Skip Murray, and those folks, I think, have done a great job as well. You know, I think, you know, it's, it's a trying time for everyone. I can't remember a time when we've had so many storms in quick succession, and, you know, those of us that were in the building here and the heat goes out, that's one problem. But, you know, you look at the oil delivery people, the leadic carriers, mail delivery folks, all those that are outside, and I really appreciate that they're continuing to serve our community, you know, even if they don't work for the town directly. Everyone's, everyone's really pitching in, and I have my strong sympathy as well for the Superintendent of Schools having to make that decision every day as well, and, you know, with everyone wondering, will they be schooling on? So, anyway, it's, it's been a trying time. And secondly, I do want, Neil Williams, Chief of Police, is here and knows I'm going to embarrass him. There was a banquet a week ago Saturday of the Maine Association of Police, and Neil, Neil was there, and his wife was there, and they invited me there, and the reason we were all there and about every officer who wasn't working was that they named Neil the Police Chief of the Year. And they said very nice things about him, including that he would shovel the sidewalks if, if they hadn't been trampled, and, you know, it was, it was a well-deserved honor, and, you know, there were a number of standing ovations that evening, but that was the first one, I believe, where everyone stood up and, you know, really acknowledged, you know, what a great person he is as well as what a great chief he is for other departments. It was a very nice event, and Italian Heritage did a good job as well. But, you know, really, I think it's just a good indication of how well-respected he is. And this, this particular award came about when he, he was, to be, to receive it, you need to be nominated by the officers in your department, and at least one of them who takes the effort to put together the nomination form. So I think that's, that's a credit to Neil as well, the fact that he was nominated in the department, so I know you all. The council stood, I did, you know?
He stood at the last.
I stood the last time.
I was embarrassed, I had a hand, bro.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Michael. It's good to see Neil that somebody else turns red like I do. Okay, moving on to the, a review of the draft minutes of January 12th. Is there a motion to accept?
Some move?
Thank you, Jessica. Is there a second? Molly? Thank you. Discussion, changes, errors, omissions? No? Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? No?
Can I mention one more thing? Molly mentioned that I was going to say something about the library, and then it just...
And then you didn't.
And then I didn't, so, just so that no one's left.
Certainly.
But what she was referring to is that there's the connector between the two buildings, and there's a section of the connector that's closest to the old Spurwink School, where the library now is, that's gone over there. And that's in getting ready for what should have happened a day or two ago, because the weather hasn't, is that the new temporary entrance to the Spurwink School is going to be right there where the connector would have been in the way. So it was, they're supposed to tear down the rest of the connector, plus the back half of the old library, again, any day now, but any day now keeps getting put out, because the folks that do that are also people who plow driveways and shopping center parking lots and the rest of it. But, you know, the, the weather is affecting the library's schedule somewhat, but they didn't expect to get a whole lot done right now, anyway. But the good news is the library's open, it's, people are dealing with it. It's, it's not ideal, but it's, it's, it's better than no library at all.
Right.
So, but anyway, that's, that's, so the mystery doesn't stay.
And it does look pretty interesting, being able to stand in front of the Spurwink School and look through that opening where the connector used to be, because that connector's been there since 1985. Nobody has seen through there, and whatever, that's been 30 years, a long time.
And that will remain open, because the new building isn't going to be connected to the old building, and there's going to be a nice plaza there that was welcoming the schools, just a home feels. Thank you for allowing me to return to that.
Absolutely. I know, I think Molly was kind of going, "Whoop, whoop."
I noticed you sort of paused, and I thought, "Why was she paused ago?" Okay.
Great. Okay, thank you. Okay, so moving on to the next item, 34, 2015, the Winnex Woods New Trail Request.
Get this one.
Oh, I'm sorry? Yes, sorry, thank you. 33, 2015, Request to Extend Deadline of Planning Board Review of Special Events Ordinance. Jamie, did you want to cover that?
Yeah, sure. So, that, we need to spend some time talking about giving more direction to the Planning Board on this issue. So what we've suggested is that we remove their deadline that we had currently given them, and kind of have it open-ended until we have a workshop, workshop on it, and send it back to them. Is that consistent with your, remember, Michael? Is that consistent with your recollection?
I don't know all the, the details of it, but if that's what you'd like to know, that's fine.
Yeah, that's what I propose.
So, so does this have to be amended? Because it looks like it's just extending the deadline, but Counselor Wagner just asked for a workshop in the meantime to give them more direction?
Yeah, I think it's to, to waive, I think the act can be to waive the March 31, 2015 deadline. That leaves it open.
Just leave it open? Without scheduling a workshop?
Well, I would, I would like that we have, you know, include that in our next agenda for the next workshop.
So is that a motion you'd like to make?
If it's necessary. I don't know if we need to make a motion, put it on the agenda, but...
Well, in terms of...
This motion, I'll make this motion. Yeah, yeah.
Wait the deadline.
Yeah, yeah, I move to approve item 33, 2015.
To waive the deadline?
To waive the deadline.
Okay. And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jim. Discussion, questions? Nope? Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? No? Great. Now I'll move on to 34, 2015, the Winnex Woods New Trail Request. Who would be doing that? Yes, sir, thank you.
So, my name's Mitch Waxman. I'm the Chairman of the Conservation Commission, and I'll just give you a brief sort of overview of what we're doing and why. As you see on the map, we have a small area... Thank you, Maureen. Cool. That's okay. So the situation that we have is that a new subdivision that was built at Eastman Meadows, we acquired some land that we built a nice trail on that is a multi-use trail that people are likely snowshoeing, cross-country skiing, biking, walking dogs. And that comes very, very close to some existing trails in the Winnick Woods network. So where you see the mouse is a small pond with an RP-1 and RP-2 wetland nearby. And we would like to make a connection between those two trails. And in thinking about that, we consulted with, I guess, the Town Engineers, if the right term, who advised us that he thought we would need a state permit, and hopefully it would be available to go in the permit by rule category. And we were, we would like to hear, or I guess we would like to propose that we put in this permit. It will be funded. We've been given a sort of matching funds out of our Conservation Commission budget and also from the New England Mountain Bike Association to complete the work. So that would cover both the permit and then actually putting in the trail, and it'll require probably 100 feet of boardwalk to complete.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Waxman? Jessica?
So the, the approval of the council is needed in order to request...
Submit the permit.
Permit?
I'm sorry, to submit the permit.
Yeah, so we know we need the permit, and now we need to know if we're, if we can do that.
Yeah, okay.
Other questions? Yes, Jamie?
How you doing? Any opposition that you've heard to this proposal?
No. I mean, you know, the, the fact of the matter is, is that it's, it's getting some casual use currently, and it's kind of degrading that area. It, you know, it is kind of wet, and there is a pond there, so we either need to fix it appropriately or do something more drastic to keep people out of there, so...
Other questions? No? Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we have before us the request, so I guess we would be looking for a motion to accept...
Authorize the application.
Authorize the application. Thank you, Michael. Jessica?
I move that we authorize the application to install, is it for the permit or the trail?
The permit.
For the permit.
The permit.
And to authorize the trail.
To, that we offer is the permit and also the installation of new trail at Winnick Woods Conservation Area.
Thank you, Jessica. Jim?
Seconded.
Thank you, Jim. Any more discussion? Questions? Okay. All in favor? None opposed? Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next item is 35, 2015, Paper Streets. And we all received something in the mail, I assume, fairly large. And Maureen is here to, I guess, present it? Yes?
Yes, Maureen's ready to do a presentation, but it is recommended that this be referred to a workshop, as it takes time. Would also like to have at that workshop, you're with Parkinson and have an executive session during that workshop for a small piece of it, so that you, you get advice from him as well on some of the challenging issues with paper streets.
Great.
And did you want to make a presentation?
Yes, she wants to.
Hmm?
Unless there are questions, I have no remarks I need to make.
Yeah, we, we had a discussion earlier, and that was, I'm not trying to cut her off, that was the, the, the understanding was, there was no sense in going over it twice.
She was very enthusiastic as she approached it, Mike, but just...
She wants to go home too.
So, um, the item is to refer it to a workshop? Is that...
Refer it to a workshop.
Okay. So, yes, Jim?
I move that we, on item 35, 2015, that we move the paper street question to a future Town Council workshop meeting, at which time our attorney will address us as well.
Great, thank you, Jim. Is there a second? Molly? Thank you.
I'll second that.
Questions? Jamie?
Yeah, I just, maybe, I don't know if it's so much a question as a request. I thought if Maureen might be able to provide, if possible, you know, a map of the town that has kind of just spots where each one of these is for the workshop? Thanks.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Maureen. Other questions? Request?
One, a single map.
A single map, yeah.
All right? Great. So, all in favor? None opposed? Great. Thank you. We will move on to political signs on traffic islands. I assume maybe Jamie wanted to present this?
Yes, sure.
Thank you.
Yes, so the Ordinance Committee met on this issue, and based on legal counsel and consensus of the Ordinance Committee, we voted to unanimously to remove the prohibition on political signs on traffic islands, although we agreed to retain the six-weeks time limit on political signs. And we think that makes the most sense, given First Amendment law, so that's what we proposed to the council.
Okay. And did you want to make that a motion?
Yeah. So I move that we approve, well, actually, the motion is that we refer this proposal to amend the ordinance to a public hearing on Monday, March 9th, 2015.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? Jessica?
I second.
Thank you. Caitlin?
No, just for purposes of disclosure, my family has a sign on a traffic island, but it's not a political sign, it's an agricultural sign, so, as, just for our new code of conduct, rules of ethics, whatever, we labeled them, I can't remember, just to disclose that.
Thank you. Other questions? Comments? Jamie?
Just state, following up on Caitlin's comment, that we discussed that at the Ordinance Committee level as well.
Good, thank you. Anybody else? No? Okay. All in favor? None opposed? Okay. Item 37, 2015, Speed Limits in Town Center Area and on Shore Road at the South Portland Line. Yes, Counselor Grenon, did you want to address this?
Yes, thank you. So this evening, as a result of the Town Center Plan, I guess what I'd like to do is, I've been asked or tasked as part of our goal to resolve some of the unfinished goals from the Town Center Plan. So I wanted to ask the council to consider potentially making a request to the Maine Department of Transportation, also known as MDOT, to reduce the speed limit in Cape Elizabeth on two separate roadways. The first is in Town Center on Route 77 from Hillway, which is just down, going north to Portland, beyond the Cumberland Farms, on the left, kind of by the, welcome to Cape Elizabeth sign, all the way through Town Center, past the high school to Fowler Road. The current speed is 35 miles per hour during this stretch, and the request would be to, for a change in status from an arterial to a lesser classification, therefore giving it a lower speed. The second request is for a lesser speed limit on Shore Road near South Portland Line, specifically in front of Ann Veronica Clothing Store. And that, we're kind of lopping it into the same area, and that came from a citizen. So let me give you a little bit of background before we go forward, is in regard to the Town Center, the council approved the Town Center Plan in October 2014. There were seven goals in the plan, one of which was number two, which states desire to, quote unquote, recast Route 77 in the Town Center as Cape Elizabeth's Main Street. The Town Center Committee that was tasked with developing this plan envisioned Cape's Main Street as one with increased pedestrian flow, with, with sidewalks that go along, lining the streets, with building standards in our town that move new construction closer to the road, and south, as I said, sidewalks and as well, a Town Center green. All these areas, these Main Street ideas are part of the plan, but, and all related in a way through our Town Center, but the, what we'll discuss today is specifically addressing the idea of a reduce in the speed limit to slow traffic down. Regarding background on the second request, was for a reduction on the speed limit on Shore Road at the South Portland Line, specifically in front of Ann Veronica Clothing Store. Ann Verona, owner of Ann Veronica, has, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, wanted to, has made a request, and for about a year now, has been asking the town to slow traffic in front of that area, the business district down there. It's, if you've been there, it's kind of a, it's a narrow street that goes right past her store, there's parking on both sides, which the parking has to remain there. There's an increase in pedestrian traffic going into her store, and people are going through, I think that Neil will tell us what the speed limit is, but, you know, they're going through at a good clip there. So I know that Mike had told me today that we've thought about doing crosswalks there, just like we have here in town, the center things, and those cannot be done. So that's kind of the background on that. So what we're asking for, and I guess we'll have some dialogue around this, is to consider possibly these speed limit changes. But in the meantime, wanted to have, we invited Neil Williams, Chief of Police, to come here from the Police Department, to brief the council on both kind of the quantitative as well observational data that he's gathered, specifically the speed and pedestrians and travel by, you know, cars in this area. So, Neil?
Yes, I was asked to give an unbiased opinion and a recommendation, and that's what I did, so I'd like to take the Shore Road and South Portland Line first. And what I did here was I got some information provided by Chief Guggins at the South Portland Police Department, consulted him after he reviewed his data. It should be noted that there's a name change. Shore Road at Cape Elizabeth is, is named Shore Road at the Cape Elizabeth Line. At the South Portland Line, it turns into Cottage Road, just so you know. But the whole length, and the whole length of Shore Road actually out to the center of town is 30 miles an hour. On the South Portland side of the line, Chief Guggins said that they had issued 12 summonses along that stretch of the roadway between Sawyer, most of them are up by Sawyer Road, not by the Cape Elizabeth Town Line. A speed survey was completed at the South Portland Line by Cape Elizabeth in which 350 vehicles were clocked with radar. The highest speed clock of any vehicle through there was 37 miles per hour, and the lowest speed was 19 miles per hour. The average speed of all those vehicles was 28.26 miles per hour. In the last three years, South Portland handled four crashes on their side of the line, but all were at Cliff Avenue, which is around the corner from the South Portland Line. On the Cape Elizabeth side of the Town Line, we handled three crashes during 2011 and 2013, and that's from MDOT. And, and all those crashes were at this intersection up here, which is Charles Road and Shore Road. Pedestrian traffic was brought out, also brought up to me as a concern at the Town Line. There is a marked pedestrian crossing on the Cape Elizabeth side of the line, and the end of the sidewalk is next to a parking lot. The report was vehicles were not stopping for pedestrians in the crosswalk. This crossing was observed during the summer hours by myself. We've had several different calls to this particular area, primarily by the same business. And so at this particular time in the summertime, which I thought was the busiest time, I went down there personally three, three different times for an hour, and only saw three people cross the road at that time, and they were all coming from South Portland into Cape Elizabeth, I assume going down to the fort. And at that particular time of those hours of day, I didn't see any problem, they crossed with no problem. The edge-to-edge pavement, pavement in that area by the Town Line is 34 to 35 feet. Therefore, this area is narrow for vehicular traffic, especially if vehicles are parked along the side of the road at the businesses. My observations, the speed surveys that were conducted in this area do not indicate a speed issue. Matter of fact, when vehicles are parked along the side of the road, it seems to act as a visual speed deterrent, because the road is narrow to begin with. The pedestrian crossing is in such a location that installing markings is near impossible. And if you can recall, the Town Center, we have those lights that flash, pedestrians push them, and there is no area that those can be installed currently at this particular crossing down there. A pedestrian sign in the middle of the roadway would not be safe, in my opinion. Should vehicles park along this, this stretch of roadway, it would not allow travel, travel lane wide enough for large vehicles to get through. And we all know that buses travel through there in the summertime to go to the fort, the trolley comes through there, the motorized trolley. And if you put something in the middle of the roadway and then had vehicles parked on the side of the roadway, I feel you'd have a problem. I do have some photographs that I took, they're probably not professional, but I did take them, and I can show you where you can observe where it, it does appear to be too close. Recommendation, crash data and speed surveys do not indicate an issue with the speed in this area. The area is too narrow to place a pedestrian side, the road, sign in the roadway. In conversations with the police chief in South Portland, we do not feel a reduction of the speed limit in this area is warranted. However, should the council wish to contact MDOT and have a review, of course, you may do so. One option to consider could be to restrict parking on one side of Shore Road in this area. By doing this, it would give more visibility for operators of... By doing this, it would give more visibility for operators of vehicles to see pedestrians waiting to enter the crosswalk. The other option would be to look at the feasibility to reconstruct the area of a crosswalk, or relocate the crosswalk to a better area. Now, I don't know if the area could be over the line in South Portland, the line is right there, which I will show you. I did not contact the businesses to see what their reaction would be to putting either side or one side no parking, but I can tell you that it would really restrict those businesses should we restrict parking in that area. That would be the town, Shore Road one. If you want to check the pictures, I can show you. The only pedestrian sign that we have that says there's a pedestrian crosswalk ahead, which was a safe enough place to put, was this particular yellow one that's right at the corner of Preble Street and Shore Road. Here's a, here's another picture that goes down through, you can see where there's a car parked on the right-hand side of the road heading into South Portland, and that small vehicle, it looks like the Honda or something, is trying, trying to go by, and you can see it's taking up most of the width of that roadway. Or, or that lane, I should say. Here's two vehicles coming from the other side. I wish, I wish you could see it from this computer because it's a lot more graphic, but, and here's another one where I think gives a better indication of having a vehicle coming from South Portland and having a vehicle parked on the side of the roadway. Doesn't really give you too much space in that particular area. Here's, I'm sorry?
Could, could you tell us where the town line is in relation to those pictures?
Give me a second, I actually took a picture, pictures of that.
Okay, sure. Thank you.
Here's the crosswalk, here's the end that goes up to the sidewalk and ends technically in that little parking lot next to the building, and here's the other side of where it ends on the sidewalk. There's a picture headed down towards Cookie Jar, Charles Road, you can see the 30 mile an hour speed limit on your right-hand side. Here's a car, another car going by Charles Road, that intersection. Here's two vehicles on the side of the roadway, one on either side, and a vehicle coming through. I think you can see also that it would be rather tight in that particular area. There's one going by. That granite marker in the middle, next to the post, white post, that is your town line. There it says CE on one side, and SP on the other. And as you see, it's right there, and that line, although I can't show you, but technically goes diagonal through Ann Veronica.
So, the, the street-facing part of the Ann Veronica business is actually in South Portland?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's your Shore Road and South Portland Line.
Just to, Mike, Neil, the other challenge is usually when one parks, you can open your door, and there's nothing to block it, because of the elevated sidewalk, if you park there, you have to, if you have a passenger, you have to park far enough away so that you can still open the door, because it's, it's the old trolley platform from the 1930s.
Yeah, I was going to say that, I believe that used to be a hotel, and a long time ago, the trolley stopped there, and so the sidewalk there is so elevated because...
I think that was the location of what they call a nickel limit, that if you went to that point, you paid a nickel, and if you continued on the trolley to Fort Williams, it was some additional amount, but I know my family, they used to go, come from Portland, my grandparents, and they didn't have much money, and they'd get off the trolley at the nickel limit and walk, walk the rest of the way.
But what I wanted to show you, if you take a look and go back to this picture, what I was, what I was trying to get at in my brief description was, if you have a vehicle on either side of the road like that, especially the vehicle that's on the left side of this picture facing Cape Elizabeth, there is no way that vehicle coming, that vehicle right there could see that a pedestrian was getting ready to start that crosswalk. And therefore, I think some of the complaints that we may get, it's true, if, if you were driving down through there, you wouldn't see it, so therefore, you didn't stop for the pedestrian in the crosswalk, but you didn't see it, so that's, I feel why we're getting some of the complaints.
Want to go onto the Shore Road?
Sure. That'd be the 77.
Just one, do you have any recommendations for where we could relocate the crosswalk?
It, I, I would actually leave that to Bob, and I hate to throw him under the bus here, but he knows how, how much room it takes, because I would think that if you're going to relocate the crosswalk, the best thing to do would also try to be putting in some black and lights, and he would know how much room that would take, I would know. I know that he's told me that there is not enough room in its current location to do that. Maureen's going to help me get to them.
Caitlin, it would probably have to be in South Portland.
Either come...
That's my, that's my guess.
I was going to say, either go one way or the other.
Drive ways.
Yeah.
And can you collaborate with South Portland regarding that? Can you collaborate with, would you collaborate with South Portland regarding putting a crosswalk on their side?
Absolutely, but...
And they'd be amenable to that?
I don't know, I haven't, I haven't talked to Chief Guggins about it, or, or who would fit the thought, fit the bill on that one, so. But, on to Shore Road, I mean, I mean, on to 77, from Hillway to Fowler Road, I was asked to do the same thing, to give an independent look, see at this, and I did. Called MDOT and got crash data for this particular area, and the same is 2011 to 2013, that's the crash data that they sent us. The stretch of roadway is now posted by MDOT at 35 miles per hour. The speed details conducted by our department were in the town center along Town Hallway and crossing the IGA. Total of 589 vehicles were clocked. Of the 589, the highest speed recorded was 47 and the lowest 21. The average of all the vehicles that traveled through there was 31.52 miles per hour. Crash data acquired from MDOT shows that the intersection of 77 Shore Road, Scott Dyer, during 2011, 2013, is classified as a high crash area. This intersection had a total of nine crashes during this time period. Of the nine crashes at the intersection, seven of those property damage only. All the crashes were during daylight hours, with six of the crashes right at the intersection of the establishment at that particular time was Jonesy's on the run. The establishment is now changed to Cumberland Farms. The intersection of Route 77 and the Poncove Shopping Area is also classified by MDOT as a high crash area. In turn, this area has also had nine crashes at the above time period. One of the crashes, though, was a car deer, and four were rear-end crashes. All nine crashes were property damage only. Observations were, the area of roadway and Route 77 between Hillway and Fowler Road has a large volume of traffic daily, especially when schools are beginning or ending for the day, and when there is an event in the community, for example, voting days, Beach to Beacon, or holidays. Speed does not appear to be a large factor here. The high crash areas do not appear the result of speeding motor vehicles, however, in looking at the data I've got, it's more so inattentive drivers and questionable turning movements. From the speed surveys completed, it shows that the average speed is less than 32 miles per hour in a 35 zone. With that being said, the town center will be growing due to recent land purchases, and with that come more vehicle traffic and increased pedestrian traffic. At this time, we now have pedestrian traffic that currently does not utilize the current marked pedestrian crossings to access Cumberland Farms, from, from the Scott Dyer Road area, and I have a picture of that. The area from Cumberland Farms does not even allow pedestrian crossing because there is no sidewalk on the store side to receive the crosswalk. The town center section of Route 77 is also very wide. With the inclusion of the bike lanes, edge-to-edge pavement is in the range of 40 feet wide. Having this width, width gives the appearance to drivers that there is plenty of room to go to the right of the vehicle when it's turning. It appears that this width allows more turning movements and passing movements, which is the causation factor for nine accidents in that particular area, or of the 18 accidents in the two high crash areas that we have. Recommendation for the future of the town center, a discussion may want to take place to have MDOT review the 35 miles an hour, and that is just a recommendation to review it, if you wish, because the feeling, I believe, is, is that there's a high pedestrian traffic in this area, and MDOT may take a look at that and say they want it lowered, they may leave it the same, I don't know. But, they also would be willing to look at pedestrian movements, I know Maureen's been in contact with them, and they're more than welcome to look at the way pedestrians go from side to side on the, on this particular roadway. That would be it, I'd like to just show you a couple pictures, unless there's any questions right up front. Yes?
On the Poncove crash site area, intersection of 77, I'm sorry, in the Poncove Shopping Center? Is that each entrance, or one in particular, one by the IGA or the other one closer to the Police Department?
It didn't say in the crash data. I think it was more so down by the...
IGA.
Let's call it the, I don't know if you call it the main, but more closer to Community Services side. Here you just have a couple vehicles going through, but it also shows that the area has the pedestrian sign that flashes, and it also has the sign in the middle of the roadway. Here you see, here's you see a car turning right, it's going to go into, which now is Cumberland Farms, you see a vehicle turning left on the Scott Dyer Road, and you see one, I assume is going straight ahead because they don't have any turn in. Here's one coming out of Shore Road with a vehicle behind it. This one's quite interesting, I wish, I wish you could see this computer, but if you look up over the side view mirror of this vehicle, you can see ahead. And then if you look at this one, can't see it, but if you look over the pedestrian sign, you'll see that there's about five U's that have just crossed the road, not using the pedestrian sign, and that's where they, the pedestrian crosswalk, and that's where we're having a little bit of a problem here. You just got more vehicles that are turning into, into Cumberland Farms. This is the intersection from, the both of the intersections that you had related to from the Poncove parking, Shopping Area, and you can see that just the movement of traffic, car coming out of the area, this second car that's going south, has got his blinker on to turn, you've got other vehicles coming through the intersection, very busy intersection. I wish I had remembered what time of day I took this picture, but I don't. This is in front of the town hall. And those are the, those are the pictures in the area. Like I said, though, you can see that the width with the bike lanes makes it quite wide, and that's why people feel and can, in, in, for the most part, you couldn't, you couldn't tonight, that's for sure, with all the snow on the side of the roadway, but when it's, when it's hot, dry, and dusty, you can get through there.
Molly?
Neil, I have a quick, two quick questions. Is it the volume of traffic on that road that makes it an arterial, is that the, is that what the defining term is for that?
I think it's how, and, and Maureen can correct me, but I think it's how you get through the center of town. You know, you get from one point, point A to point B.
And, and because it's an arterial, that's why the speed limit is set at 35 and not at 25?
It's, it's been set at 35 because MDOT looked at it, and it's not, I, I think that's one of the, one of their, what they call warrants, or factors that they take into play here, and they look at that and say, this is supposed to move vehicles from point A to point B, this roadway.
Jim?
When the, I think it was Sarah Lennon shared the, sort of the calming, pedestrian calming issues in the town center, that crosswalk that was determined that you mentioned here was part of that process. I guess I wonder, was there any discussion back then, because both Cumberland Farms and Jonesy's were in existence, of moving that crosswalk, if you will, down further, which is where you say you're having the problem today?
I do not know if that conversation took place.
Never even, sorry as you know, I never even...
I do not. I know that the criteria for a crosswalk is not met in that particular area because it had, doesn't have a landing area, you can't take a crosswalk into that particular flow of traffic into that Cumberland Farms that way. That, MDOT doesn't look at that as a feasible place to put a crosswalk, the way it's designed right now.
Sure. Okay, so there would have to be a design change in order to get what you're asking?
I would believe so, because they can't do it now, so they do it later, but...
Interesting.
If you notice the key bank, there's this little tiny piece of sidewalk there?
Yeah.
That had to be put in in order to allow the crosswalk to win, because it needed a place to land.
Because that was part of Shore, the Shore path as well, we came right to that intersection.
But that little piece of sidewalk was in for us before the Shore Road side.
Yes, I remember it being about $4,000 or something like that, or whatever.
Well, they, they put in the crosswalk, the flatters, that little piece of sidewalk, plus the signs in there.
Yeah.
He needs a tip-down for ADA, I believe, also.
It was.
Needs, needs a, they call it a tip-down for...
Tip-down with the, with the, with those sort of polka dots or whatever you call them on there for, for touch, touchpad.
We installed it new, so we put the tip-down in.
Yes, yes.
You also, you know, need those, those little bubbles down.
It's like a touchpad, isn't it, for, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Jim?
Yeah, I know that one of the proposals of the Town Center Planning Committee was talking about sidewalks that might go down towards the Methodist Church, so that would be a potential place to put a crosswalk, you know, in the future, if we go that direction.
Yeah.
I think the council did approve the Tiff District a while ago, and it hoped that that generates some monies to, to do that, and that's almost ready to be approved by the state fund. They take a while.
Any other questions for Chief Williams?
No, I think you've hit all of the major points to consider, as crosswalks are integrated with the speed.
Thanks.
Oh, Jessica?
While we have Chief Williams here, slightly off topic, but it's related, I have noticed what I think are a lot of near misses at the new Cumberland Farms, because I think of the volume of people buying gas there now that there's only one place to buy gas, and I don't know if the Police Department has observed any of this or not, but I'm now, well, it's cheaper in South Portland at the moment anyway, but I am now not buying my gas there anymore because I almost, myself almost hit twice, and so I've just, I'm not going there anymore.
I don't have any stock in Cumberland Farms, but I know that because the price has been reduced with that 10 cents, that a lot of people have been talking about and going there. What the problem we have right now is with those high snowbanks, it's just crossed my fingers every time I go by there. But, there is a lot of in and out traffic, I know that your workers during the noon hour like that area, we've been on them because they've been parking too close to the intersections, and, or the intersection going in, I should say, drive-ins, and we've had to move them out of there. We actually asked them to park across the street and walk across without the crosswalk.
Other questions? So I guess what's in front of us is about the council sending a letter to the MDOT, so did you want to make a proposal for that, Patty?
Yeah, I think it's, we can make a motion and then have some conversation, either put it up or down. What I heard regarding 77 from Chief Williams is that he recommended that we have MDOT review that stretch of area for both speed and pedestrian movement. review that stretch of area for both speed and pedestrian movements, you know, and that would give us some, some feedback. I think, Maureen, you'd know, we, you can apply for a petition then for that information. You don't, is it necessary that they would come? If you did apply for that, would make some changes? Can you speak to that? If we did petition it, is it, you have to live by what happens?
You know, planners have been talking about this for a while and in my planning circles we're finding that we used to petition to MDOT and ask them to reduce speed and in some cases, they have not only refused to reduce speed, but they've actually asked for the speed to go up. So we were kind of cautious about even asking for that. Nevertheless, the town center plan does say that we should be looking at lower speeds because this is like a main street. So I do think you can, you can make the case, not just based on speed, but on based on the steps the town has taken with your zoning and the congestion of uses and your pedestrian-friendly approach. So I did speak to Dan Stewart, who used to be the Bicycle and Pedestrian Coordinator at then MDOT, and he got on the phone with me and he pulled the new pedestrian coordinator and they were looking on aerials and they're speculating on where we might be able to put crosswalks. So yes, there is some potential here to maybe to add some crosswalks. The trick is not to put them where they're not going to be safe. And MDOT has rules about, you know, we don't want to put a crosswalk so that it's too far back from the intersection because that's not where cars are looking for pedestrians. So if you're making a turn and you've already finished a turn and all of a sudden there's a crosswalk, that's where the concern is. And, you know, it's, I'm kind of waving here a little, but the challenge with this intersection has always been that it's a dogleg intersection. It's not like this. It's like this. And where our U's are crossing is at a very wide part of Route 77 where you might be able to start the crosswalk on a corner at Scott Dyer Road, but it won't land at the corner on Shore Road. It'll land midway through. So that, I have serious concerns about that from a design perspective. And on the phone with Dan Stewart, we were kind of speculating about maybe moving this intersect, this crosswalk we have here a little closer to Shore Road and then trying to really encourage people to cross at this point and then over Shore Road to get to Cumberland Farms. And, you know, if we did do that, we probably really would need to do some outreach to the schools and maybe get some students involved in understanding why that's the safer way to go. But as for, you know, MDOT being able to let us put in crosswalks here, if all we're doing is talking about paint, he didn't seem to think it was going to be that big a deal. If we have to redesign the intersection and do construction, then it's, it's a huge, enormous project. The other concern I had was that there was a time when MDOT had rules on what your maximum speed could be to even consider a crosswalk. The town had petitioned for a crosswalk down by Rudy's and had been turned down because of the speed. MDOT has just changed the rules on that and even at 35 miles an hour, we could still look at putting some crosswalks in here. I don't know if that answers your question.
Michael?
Yeah, I just wanted, you know, I remember a discussion a few months ago on safety and wanting to do certain things and I'm not going to say what I said back then, but, you know, I think, you know, as the council has expressed its concern about safety in that whole corridor, particularly with all the, the activity at the new Cumberland Farms, I think it'd be really good to have MDOT take a look at this, take a look at the speed. I think it's, I, I can't see them raise again. If they do, you know, we, we, we can go say hello to the governor, I suppose. But, you know, there's just, I just think about it.
Okay, so would you like to make a motion about sending a letter to MDOT?
Yeah, sure.
I think there's some wording here that you might be able to use.
Yeah, let's see here. Let's see. I'd like to move that the town of Cape Elizabeth or council petition MDOT for a review for speed and pedestrian movements and potentially a reduction of the speed limit at town center from Hillway Road to Fowler Road.
Thank you. Is there a second? Jessica?
A second.
Thank you. Further discussion? Jessica?
I, I may be, this may be a point of order. I wanted to ask something else about, it's not related to the motion on the table, though. I wanted to discuss the Shore Road area, so I should wait.
To make a motion?
Yeah.
I'm after it. Yes, all right. Any other questions about the motion? All right, all in favor? None opposed. Jessica?
Okay. Yeah, I, you know, read, read the material in advance and from the discussion tonight, I'm not in favor of asking for any review of Shore Road, the, the area at the end of the, near the South Portland line.
Okay. Does anybody else want to pursue that?
I'm, sorry, I'd be interested in just having a conversation with South Portland as to whether or not we can relocate the crosswalk. I mean, if that's, I mean, it seems to be, if it's not a huge, you know, deal, if it's going to change the safety, because it does seem to be a problem if you have cars parked there, and if it's possible to move it just to, you know, 20 feet in either direction, that would improve visibility and the ability to cross, it's worth a conversation is all.
Molly?
A quick question from Mike on that. Is that the $4,000 kind of project that we were talking about here at the corner of Shore Road or is it just painting on the pavement?
It would be similar. It's, it's a little more complicated because it's in South Portland and we also, you get Woodbury there, you know, as Neil said, you want a crosswalk close to where there's intersecting streets so that people come out. But the other real issue is on the other side where, where Woodland comes down, you come out of Woodland and there's a rock outcropping and it's a really blind spot.
It is, yeah.
So, you know, it might have to be quite a, you know, the next block down in South Portland to make it a little bit safer because that, that, if you've ever come out of Woodland there, it's, I think that's probably where we're getting accidents is, or actually, South Portland would get them because it is really dangerous trying to get out of there and take a left turn.
So if you move that down, though, does it then only need...
You got to move it down.
Be painted or does it need flashing lights on the $4,000?
That's what we'd want to look at is, you know, I, I think what, what the owner of the business is, is looking to maximize it, but, you know, but you can do things in stages. You can first, let's put a crosswalk in, see how that, you know, works, see if people are observant of it, and if they're not observant of it, that is when you begin to, you know, upgrade to putting in the, the flashers. Obviously, not every intersection has those flashing lights.
Right. Who decides that? Does that come from us in the community or MDOT is not involved?
In this case, it could be the city of South Portland because it's, it's, it's in their, it's in the city.
But not MDOT?
Hmm?
Not MDOT?
Uh, they, yeah, those would be municipal decisions and, you know, South Portland might, since we're looking for it, you know, I don't know. South Portland has its budget challenges too.
Jessica, then Jim?
Well, I just was going to kind of ask similar questions. I mean, this is really South Portland and not Cape Elizabeth we're talking about.
But we do...
I think safety is very important, but I, I don't know how, how, and I'm sure you know, how one would coordinate a concern, but that's...
We speak with South Portland. They're a fine neighbor and all the municipal officials get along just great, so.
Jim?
I'll go to Chief Williams' comment earlier that he indicated that the businesses in this section have not been brought into this discussion. And I would be concerned about representing something to South Portland that there isn't the sort of willingness of, on the part of the businesses that are directly affected. I would hate to have you go ahead and agree to something that they would find not conducive to good business or good practice. I mean, I just, I'm all for, we've had enough experience with the folks who live in this small section between Charles Road and the town line in the past in terms of dealing with Tara, that I would hate to have us go forward with a plan like this without some input from that group. That's all.
You know, we could probably call a meeting someday and meet in the fire station meeting room of, you know, the chief, myself, and invite South Portland representatives.
So, Michael, you want to take that as something that you would follow through with or...
Whatever the council would like.
Okay. Does somebody want to make a motion about that?
That's before I'd say much. We can have a dialogue about putting in the crosswalk, which is simple. I don't think we're talking about restricting traffic on each side. So I think it's a much lesser concern. I guess I would, to your point, Jim, would be, so I think, I think just having the dialogue and certainly we don't have to announce anything, right? If there's any type of recommendation, so I think it's at least worth taking that step since we have a citizen. So I guess I would make a motion that we talk with Chief Goodens or whoever you need to talk to with South Portland and find out if indeed a crosswalk, there's a reasonable place to put in a crosswalk and if that would indeed solve this issue of pedestrian crossing in that area.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Thank you, Caitlin. Further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Opposed?
Opposed.
Thank you.
Just if I might, and we'll also, I, I don't think there was any, we'll also have a chat with the, the business owners there as well. I think, you know, the chief presented a lot of data that they should be aware of tonight, so we will invite them to, to be part of the dialogue as well.
Madam Chair, then could I please change my vote?
Certainly.
Thank you. I'll vote in affirmative if that's part of, part of the process.
All right, so 7-4. Jamie?
Yes, thanks, Kathy. Just one question about the process for sending the letter to MDOT. Would that be, that Maureen would draft it and then it'll come from the chair? Would the council have any more ability to review that?
No, they're simply asking for review. It's a fairly standard letter, a couple of sentences. So, you know, I, you know, unless the council wishes to review it, we, we usually wouldn't, usually, either I would sign it or I'd give the council chair a call saying, you want to sign this letter.
The only thoughts that I have was highlighting to, to MDOT that with a recent sale of the, that the triangle there, that there's going to be a new building going in there with a new library, with potential activity in Key Bank, with what's happening at Cumbie's, you know, to highlight all the new activity that's going to increase vehicular and pedestrian traffic.
Yeah, we want to make sure they're aware of all that.
Jamie? Anybody else? Okay, then we will move on to item 38, 2015, the renewal of the agreement for the William H. Jordan Farm LLC to continue to operate the composting program at the recycling center.
Yeah, I think it's fairly self-explanatory. This has been operated by the William H. Jordan Farm since February of 2005, and I think what's really important is, is that the program saves the town labor and equipment costs, provide the significant organic recycling opportunity, and it also helps to preserve one of our family farms by having them to have a side business that, that does this. What, what the particular arrangement is, is that, you know, we have this agreement with them. They do all the moving of the material, they do all of the sales, they do everything, they keep the profits and all. What it, what it does, it just takes us out of the picture of having to deal with it all the time.
Great. Does somebody want to make a motion? Jessica?
I so move.
Thank you. Is there a second? Jamie, thank you. Discussion? Caitlin?
Again, with our code of conduct, I am related to the Jordan Farm family distantly and also they are very close personal friends and acquaintances and business associates, but I don't have anything to do with the composting.
Thank you. Any, any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, none opposed. All right, looking up, there are no citizens here to discuss items not on the agenda. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Still moving in too quickly. So 39, 2015, Fort Williams Park use requests for 2015, I assume. Michael?
Yeah, the Fort Williams Advisory Commission met last month and reviewed all of the annual requests. We try to have them do it all in one evening and they reviewed all of these and there's related feeds for some of them, but it's everything from the Engine 1 art show to a Taste of the Nation main event, which was held one other time, Family Fun Day, High School Graduation, Little Lee, something called the Lucy Fund, and an American Cancer Society Walk. But, you know, it's a busy weekend, October 17th and 18th, but our public safety looked at this as well as public works and otherwise, that post Columbus Day time is pretty quiet in the park, so I feel we can accommodate it.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Molly?
So move to approve the request for the Fort Williams Park use for 2015.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Jim, thank you. Discussion?
I have a question. If we get additional use requests during the year, do we just approve them individually? Is that...
Yes.
Okay, great.
And these are only the large group uses, the smaller group uses, there's other provisions for approval. I think it comes to the council, I think the council, we're having 50 people.
Okay. Oh, that's good to know. Great. Anything else? All in favor? None opposed. Now I will move on to the citizen opportunity for discussions of items not on the agenda. There is nobody in the room but us, so I assuming we're going to move past that. And the next thing we will do is go to item 40-2015, the town manager's annual evaluation. So I will ask for a motion to go into executive session and we will not be coming back into public session for anybody who's watching from home. So, having said that, Jessica?
I move that in conformance with one MRSA stat, statute...
Section.
Section 4056A, we hereby enter into executive session to continue the annual evaluation process for the town manager.
Thank you, Jessica. Is there a second? Jim?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in, oh...
No, 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 no.
Okay, all in favor? Unionize. Great.
The double S just means section, section.
And, um...
Good journey now. Exactly.